I call the order of regular meeting of the Board of Education of the Ocean Central School District. Can't be read? For today, Tuesday, March eighth, two thousand and twenty-two. Today's meeting is being held in the District Administration Building and live streaming through YouTube. Next on agenda is the pledge of allegiance and a moment of meditation. Please keep in mind Wayne Hill, a retired industrial worker for the district. Next on agenda is privilege of the floor. Justice Carter.
Right ahead, David.
Hello, my name is Joseph Monahan. I'm here at Ocean High School. I'm a white scout in two sixty-three in Jersey. I've been across country around since seventh grade, and I'm a number four team captain since my sophomore year. However, I've been here through my own cross country course, my Eagle podcast. I know it's work, I still have signs on the course, and it'll be a good idea when I'm streaming about my Eagle podcast. Right now, our course has spray painted their show run toward. My project will be to promote, promote the wrecking signs that everyone's out there uses throughout the female course. Also, I will start signing with a course map underneath it and a finished sign. The sign will be on PVC pipe with ceiling on, so the signs can be removed after each break. So I'm not being a wimp for the ground people. I think this one could work across country course by helping didn't things not get lost and also helping not lose time in their breaks. My hope is to help my twelve cross country rounds while leaving the Ocean High School course safe and professional. I would like to start my product, the end of May, so it'll be done before they do this this year. And be ready for the start of the cross country season September. Thank you, and I hope, and I hope you approve my Eagle podcast.
Great, great.
So that looks great.
Yeah.
Yep.
Looks great.
Yeah.
Awesome, fantastic. Can't wait to see it.
Yep.
Next one, um, free project. It all approved?
We approved.
We approved.
Approved.
Nice job.
You don't have to stick around for that long. You don't have to stick around for that long.
Welcome to stay.
More welcome.
Welcome to Good Home.
Yeah.
Welcome to Good Home.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Good luck.
Thank you. Good job. Nice, thank you.
Good night.
Thank you.
Good job.
Good job.
Next on agenda is the present support. First, I'd like to welcome our student editor, Kara.
Hi, brother.
Good to see you again.
Nice to see you.
Yeah. Exactly. A few updates for me tonight. Currently, I think the strategic plan is have everybody for survey.
Survey, surveys are open and still looking for increased participation. Scroll with another communication after our encourage parent and faculty participation with surveys to help us.
Okay. Keep informed for everybody's or chance to participate, so hopefully everybody will do that. Capital projects, we're proposing a capital project. Focusing on our HVAC and ventilation and roofing as well. It's important to communicate to the public that the capital project will not be any additional taxation or money to them. We'll be using capital reserve money and federal grant money. Important message to deliver, and I think we'll probably follow that up with a quarterly agreement communication to the community. So everybody is understanding and has a chance to ask questions with me. Budget will be started to be discussed tonight. The board's goal is to work toward a zero percent levy again this year. Last year, we were able to do that. We're working closely with our administrative team to try and provide that also to the community this year again. I don't think we've ever had two years where there was zero percent tax. That will be your goal. And it's been important for people to keep our costs down as much as we can. Springtime, we're in March, an exciting time of year. Starting to see the light in the tunnel for weather, February tomorrow. Any notes on that?
Uh, yeah.
I asked, I'm asking real quick. Come, come spring comes, exciting thing. We're still wrapping up our, our winter sports, I think the basketball team has a big game tomorrow night, hopefully, for the weather. It's a good launch event tomorrow, Texas United Championships, that's the first time ever, which is surprising. Congratulations, we'll do well tomorrow. It also brings one of our favorite times of the year ever, the other board, which is the place. Play will be out in the musicals. Kids do a fantastic job and their advisors and I call on, look forward to seeing them, Al Matts. Should we got that picture? So I know those tickets are for sale now, so please support the group, support the kids. It'll be a whole night out, so take a look. Next on agenda is the legislative update. Shannon?
Okay, so we had, our last meeting was March second, and a few things were, there were some few takeaways from that. We had a presentation by David Shaw, who's an attorney, represents our district as well, some others. He just reviewed like the legal and contractual things that came up during COVID, so there was a presentation on that. There was a legislative update, and that was kind of comprised of recap of all the meetings that had gone on with local legislators that have been going on for the last couple of weeks. And some of the universal takeaways, all the local legislators are supporting the need for an increase in social emotional support in schools, support looking into increasing the amount a district can hold in their fund balance, and support increasing aid to CTEC programs. And then the last part was also a brief presentation from Kathy Schell, who was, she was in charge of coordinating everything for the OM competition that happened over the weekend. So this was prior to the competition, and she was just kind of explaining some of the things that were going on and involved with it. And so this year, because there was no spectators allowed, they had, a lot of the CTEC kids were working the program, so it was pretty awesome. So the CTEC kids, like the audio visual kids, they did all the streaming for all of it so that everybody could watch. The law enforcement students, they did all the security, so you know, it was a really great event. And just as a side note of it, you know, like our teams did so great in motion, the kids did so great, the coaches did great, and you know, like Kathy just does such a good job with that, and also, you know, Ms. Beth is just so great for our district. She does so many good things to coordinate so that all the Ocean teams are in a good spot, so that's it.
Great. Thank you. Thank you. Going to reverse order tonight. I go to higher worse. So we'll go for the discipline superintendent, curriculum instruction personnel, and technology. Mr. Park?
Thank you, Mr. Pucci. Good evening, everyone. A couple of quick updates for you, so we'll start off with our usual Choose Love update. Dr. Coats and I will be meeting with the Choose Love team of strategists that we've been working with on March eleventh. And at this point in time, we hope to plan our next steps for full implementation. This time around, we will review feedback from the previous session, go over a couple of smart goals that our team of champions generated along with the team of strategists, and then we'll also view the debrief video and prepare to disseminate that to our Choose Love Champions team. We hope to get into the development of our future personalized workshops for each of the buildings. And again, get ready for full implementation. Everything has been going extremely well. I do have a great printout, but unfortunately, I left on my desk. However, I can get that to the board if you wish to see that. It is directly from the Choose Love team, from results of our survey that was shared with us during our last meeting. So everything's been going great with Choose Love, and we look forward to moving ahead once again. Also, a quick update that we are getting ready for the New York State assessment in English Language Arts. This will be once again computer-based testing using the NextTerror system. Team of administrators working diligently to program that system so that it's all ready to go on March twenty-ninth and March thirtieth. So again, March twenty-ninth, March thirtieth will be the ELA test in our GIS and CJ Hooker locations. And our principals will be sending home some information for parents regarding the testing sessions. Also, as previously mentioned, we had a great showing at the Odyssey of the Mine events. And we will be sending two teams to the state finals on March twenty-sixth at the Syracuse Fairgrounds. So, you know, we're really excited about that. However, I also want to mention that we did have a great showing with multiple other teams placing. One of which was coached by one of our board members here, Ms. Johnson. Very proud of all of our team members, very proud of all the coaches, understand that many of them volunteered a ton of time on behalf of our students, and our students do really well traditionally. So off we go to the Syracuse Fairgrounds, and hopefully, once again, we'll send some teams to the world finals. Keep in mind that the previous two years, we had virtual world finals, we had a second place team, and we have world champion, a virtual world champion that will be competing once again, that would be a team coached by Mr. and Mrs. Sullivan. So we're very proud once again to send them and we wish them the best as they look to move forward. And that's it for my update this evening.
Questions? Is there any update on people's, are we going to be full after? It's general, right?
So the federal government declined the waiver from the state to forego any testing, which is the reason that we're moving forward with testing for create ELA and that. And there has been no further updates with them along, any kind of leave for the state regions. So we anticipate administration most testing. So if there's any questions?
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
No, you go ahead.
Go ahead and do what you want.
Next agenda is the superintendent report, Dr. Coats.
So I have to start with one non-agenda item. They always say it's very difficult to go last, and I will say ditto to every, everything else, for all the kudos that have been given already. The one additional piece that I do not want to leave out, our cheerleading team traveled to the state tournament this past week as well. Mr. Joffe, their, their results again?
They finished eighth, and according to the coach and everybody that's on the field, they did very well.
Thank you, thank you. It is certainly great to see our teams, all of our programs flourishing again, to see our students participating on the stage. It is really a great turning point for not just the Ocean community, but for communities throughout New York, throughout the country, to see their children actively engaged with their schools and, and partake in these programs. When we talk about social emotional health, for children to be able to interact with one another with other adults, we're headed in the right direction, and we're going to work to stay there. There's one non-agenda item, if I can ask the board to look at, uh, the sheet in your packet. It speaks specifically to a trip that is supposed to be going out over spring break. And I have to make a recommendation to the Board of Education based on where this trip is to travel. If you know the geography of Europe, where the Ukraine is located in terms of the cities that are on this list, I would not feel comfortable recommending to the board that this trip be allowed to continue. If this was a different part of the world, perhaps we could have a conversation. I know Mrs. Panzer's reached out multiple times to the travel company already to see if there's an opportunity to move the trip to a different venue, to look at South or Central America, to look at Canada. Everything that has been shared back with me is that it's, you go there or you don't. That's where the program for this trip. Mrs. Panzer worked with the families that had signed up, and unfortunately, this trip has been postponed multiple times already due to COVID. We don't have a lot of latitude here to, to be able to say it's going to move. The only thing that we have the ability to do is to postpone the trip. We encourage many of our families who had originally signed up to take the trip insurance. Obviously, that is a very personal decision on behalf of the family because it comes at a managed cost. But from the district's perspective, I have to advocate to the board that we again postpone this trip unfortunately. I would not of good conscience as, as an educator, as a chief school administrator, or as a parent for that matter, saying that it would be good to send the school to this part of the world. Because the board does approve these trips by resolution, we have the next meeting, if it is consensus of the board to postpone the trip, would have to pass another resolution that does postpone the trip prior to spring break.
I'm actually one of the students that's currently doing roll on that trip. Thank you. Um, and as a whole, just from my years and my opinion, it is quite rewarding to be traveling to a location like, uh, it's just bordering. And while it is just bordering, we also have to, you know, be concerned with immigrants, you know, who are coming or even fleeing really. You know, they're going to be fleeing, and it, it's just a scenario that. It's just, it's, it's very much, you know, sad and disappointing, but at the cost, it's.
Well said.
Yeah.
Well said.
I think, you know, the board does put in the clause each for the trip to reveal the right to cancel what was offered.
That is correct.
Very disappointing.
Well, maybe the same. If it's postponed, others can still go, but it's the same.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay.
So with the direction of the board, I'll work with this barrel then, and that's made a resolution prepared.
Anybody, anybody agree?
Of course. Do you need to wait?
What do you say? Well, no. I'm going to defer you. Just so the students might know now.
Right.
Yeah.
That's one of the things that, you know, that I'm concerned, for them going to have to, you know, we, in the end of the day, we basically know at work.
And you say most of the other students, your friends, that are going to do the same way?
Yeah, yeah, and they're understanding the circumstances. Otherwise, you know, it would have been more disappointing if they're all there, but lives being lost.
Yeah, I agree with that.
I guess my question too is, is there a timeframe of trip and jobs? Do you have to give a certain notification there?
I'd have to defer to Mrs. Panzer, I don't know the logistics of it.
Right, so we keep waiting, and I make.
So I'll defer to the board. If Mrs. Farrell's comfortable with the resolution being tabled, there's a motion to vote.
Do you want me to make one up here?
Uh, I'll just say.
Why is that?
Yeah, it resolve Board of Education. In sense, the approval of the, uh, the history search to prove best manner and law.
To be, to be postponed to, I'm defying.
Oh, it was postponed to, um, future date.
To be postponed to future date.
Well, we read it now. You got, you read it or you read it?
Don't you do something?
I do all of that. Uh, here we go, how about this? Any emotion to postpone the trip, Tom, Mike, you know, I hear. They resolved upon a recommendation of superintendent schools. Orification postpones. The Panzer issued trip to put a pass, the M product to a public determined date. All there.
I have.
Close.
Sorry.
Thank you.
It's unfortunate.
It's unfortunate, but I think it's the right decision at this time.
Did I label that ten point eleven?
I would give it a seven because that's right now.
How seven point one? That was seven point one.
Mr. Rediker, if you don't mind, if you could get me into the Zoom, sorry. So it is that time of year where we begin our annual budget presentations to the Board of Education to switch gears. If you look at the packets in front of you, there should be three different documents that the board already has. One is a budget summary that Mr. Linden has prepared. Another is an updated line item draft of the budget. And then the third is a revenue projection for next year.
Need to click in again.
I don't see it. Click in again. Try it again. Just to bring Mr. Linden into the meeting. So while I'm getting into the Zoom, I'm going to ask our four building principals to join us here at the head table to begin the process. So what the principals will be presenting to you tonight, so I can get Mr. Linden to be in the meeting here.
Do you have that, Marty?
Say it again.
I don't know if I have permissions.
Do you have permission to let me? There we go.
All right.
So Mr. Linden has joined us remotely, he's our intern business official, will be here to also answer line item questions. The document that's on the screen in front of you, the purpose of the presentation tonight is to correlate for the Board of Education and any attendees to the meeting, what is requested in the budget. So many times, we simply get lost on looking dollar for dollar, which is important, we need to know the intricacies of the budget. But the purpose of the presentation tonight is to have the principals explain to you what has been requested within this budget. If you look at the document over my shoulder, I'm going to get out of the way in a moment. They will go through line by line first, what they've requested to be funded. In the middle, anything that they are not funding this year, perhaps that they have done in the past. And then finally, any forward-looking items, perhaps connected to what they've requested, issues that they see rising in their buildings, or things that they would like to see grow within their buildings or their programs at the same time. They're going to go building by building, they're going to go by category that they have explained in the past, some of them maybe for the first time. But they will explain the different budget codes. Mr. Linden's going to be available to crosswalk any of that information or clarify anything that you're seeing in the line item, line item analysis. It's meant to be a dialogue, he'll be ready to answer your questions at the end. But without further ado, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Friedman, and he's going to get started with Scotch Town Avenue.
Good evening, thank you. First item, I'd like to discuss that Scotch Town Avenue budget is the supply line. So I won't go into all the gritty details of what's involved in supplies for, you know, a K through two elementary school. But as you can imagine, it involves a lot of art supplies, construction paper, bulletin board paper, borders. And a lot of these items cannot be used from year to year. They get used up, they get lost. So these are, these are things that we need to purchase from one year to the next. In addition to that, some of the things that we were talking about was that during the twenty twenty-one school year, when a lot of the students were home, a lot of these items that we sent home never came back. So those items will need to be replenished as well. And, you know, just, just a few things that will need, that we talked about, the health of hands in the classroom, instruction, or some document cameras. We purchased some of those in years past, some of the teachers have requested, we've been looking to get some more. Looking at our light speed amplification system, a lot of the systems are, are quite old that may need to be repaired or updated. So the next item is our contractual line, and it really involves our panel tuning and copy repair. But in conjunction that, especially with Choose Love, and we started at Scotch Town a positive behavior intervention system this year. So I've been in contact with policies about having somebody come in and doing a two-day workshop with the staff. So that we're all kind of, you know, when we hit the ground next year or whatever, we're all on the same page, we're all speaking the same, same language, and we're aware of, you know, how everyone working together to develop a culture of kindness and respect at Scotch Town. Moving right along to our textbook line, you know, of course, we have our method focus, our reading wonders program. And both of these involve consumable materials, you know, which are workbooks, and they cannot be used from one year to the next. So all of those items need to be replaced. But with that, we also purchased our foundations program this year. And that too has consumable materials which will need to be replaced. So we're using it this year, but again, so we can't use it again for next year. And lastly is our equipment line. We have, you know, we purchased some district radios this year, but we do need more. We use the radios for arrival, for recess, for dismissal throughout the school day. Admin has it, a lot of our special, special area collections have it, so it, it's really great safety. And we do need, do need those radios for everyone to stay in contact with each other. And also, we look, we purchased a lot of easels this year that went with the foundations program. The funded, unbeknownst to me, the foundation program had a lot of magnetic pieces, so we needed easels with a magnet, magnetic board, so. And also, they needed storage areas and easels to be able to move from one area to the classroom. And also, you know, as a future need, I'm sure a lot of you have been in our cafeteria, it does get quite noisy. We do have some soundproofing boards in there, but we're looking. it does get quite noisy. We do have some soundproofing boards in there, but we're looking to get some more. So, so as far as Scottstown goes, that's, that's our budget. I'll be happy to take any questions if you might have.
Is it okay with the board to go there if there's a question unless you want to do a summation at the end?
I have a, I have a broad question, okay? You might have explained it, I was reading something, but alright, we have the three columns, alright? Funding request, that's what they're asking for in the budget, okay? Defunded, something, future consideration, that's what they want going down or going forward, or that's what they want now?
These are things that we need to look forward to, that are not being requested to be funded this year, that we will need to do so in the future.
Okay. So we can't do this all the way here this year?
We can certainly pull something from one line to increase another.
We did get some radios this year, but, but looking at, a lot of our radios are already in a state of disrepair or they're just, they're breaking down. So, you know, looking forward, we are going to need more.
What's the cost of?
They're about $400 each.
Alright, so what they're asking for, defunded and wish list, that's the three columns.
Correct.
Thank you.
Can I ask a question? Is there anything, any current funding requests to support the PBIS or Choose Love?
So we, we use a lot, we use money from our current supply line for our PBIS. We purchased, you know, Velcro. We created these little Scotty Compliment rewards that we, that all the teachers put on, on the side of their classroom door, because we can't put it on the classroom door. That big old gem right for the fire. For the fire and safety code. So all those were to the side. So we, we've used a lot of in-house money for our PBIS system. What's in-house money? From our supply line. Personal pool. Nothing? No?
So now with the foundations, are you currently using foundations now?
Yes. So we have it for our kindergarten first and second grade classrooms. That was purchased this year, and we're looking to expand it to our E and L and AIS moving forward for next year. Thank you.
Dr. Wildwood, turn it over to you.
Yes, thank you. So good evening, everyone. I appreciate you having us here tonight. So moving into our supply lines, you know, so we're basically supplying 26 general ed classrooms for or more special ed classrooms, depending on what happens with that next year, and at least seven interventionist AIS teachers and such. So obviously, we're going to be supplying the homeroom supplies this year, as always. Actually, as a side note, our PTO is even going to be trying to put together a parent package to pre-order certain pieces of that that the parents supply, but we're trying to take on more of that this year. This also includes special area supplies, which is, you know, art, general music, instrumental, just kind of moving through and constantly replacing pieces of those. And there's definitely been an increase in materials needed for students due to the pandemic. We certainly have more families struggling to meet the needs of their kids, so we are taking that into consideration as much as possible. In terms of some new projects that we're putting in place this year, one is certainly, we just came from a meeting from, we're trying to put an outdoor classroom in. We're getting a lot of people involved in that. We're in the beginning stages, hoping to break ground this summer, but we are getting some outdoor seating for that, seeing what our budget can supplement for that while we can work with the PTO and the district on that in other ways. And then just, I'll throw a shout out to the staff at GIS because Choose Love and the materials that we've started investing in and will continue investing in next year. I actually had the Choose Love Champions at GIS come to me and kind of knocking, knocking my door down to try to get in and get started on this at GIS. So they've already kind of told me what they expect, and I'm going to provide it and give them as much as they can, some books and such, which we'll come back to in a little bit. The administrative needs and building-wide needs, so the two of the big ones here is class creator, which helps us with class creation at the end of every year, into next year, and it kind of takes a lot of our, our students out and helps us develop initial settings of classes when the teachers get their hands on it and make swaps and trades to make sure that socially the settings are correct. And then school dismissal manager, which is a big time saver for our building. I will tell you, it saves us about two hours a day in just notes and phone calls and so on and so forth, and it's a lot easier for the parents to quickly tell us where the trial is going at the end of the day. Things that we've kind of, we're not continuing to fund and kind of, you know, offsetting costs. We have done an assessment of our digital accounts and wonders program, the license expired mid-year this year. When we looked at the cost effectiveness of it, it was not being utilized much, but it was a very high cost per student. So we decided to move beyond that because we have much better tools already. And then we are also now funding student planners, which costs around $5,000 a year. But what we found and from the feedback from the teachers, the, like using 21st century skills around Google Classroom and using just journals for the kids that still need to do that handwriting piece has been much more effective. Future considerations in the supply area, obviously, we need to really take a hard look at Project Lead the Way. There's a lot of materials in that, and with COVID and us doing some parts and the changing units due to the new science standards, we just need to come up with a new list and really what's the year-to-year cost going to be after a real full year of school. And then the increased need for scheme materials, certainly we're looking to meet the near state technology standards. There is some changes that we're looking at doing in our lab and so on and so forth. Give a shout out to Kendra Bartzinski, who's done a lot with our 3D printing, but the cost for the filaments and all that is a cost we were set to kind of take into account for the supplies. And certainly, we're, we're looking to do more collaborative student seating throughout the building as we move forward. Moving on to contractual lines, really, this is just straightforward. It's, you know, our piano tuner is instrument repair and so on and so forth. But looking at a multi-year budget usage, our maintenance lines, especially around copiers and that, has been overfunded. So we've moved a little bit out of that and more into the supply lines. And then in future considerations, certainly due to not just COVID, but moving into what, you know, what we want to do moving forward with student assessment and understanding where our students are at right now, we're really looking forward to getting something in place that'll help us really collect data on students and look at it from the building class and individual levels. We also have some expertise in our building that we'd like to utilize to start putting in place inquiry teams to really understand what our, what our assessments are saying about our students. Okay, so moving into textbooks. I'm sure if you can scroll that down. No. There it is. So the, the textbooks, there's, I'm not going to read every one of these to you. I'll just point out a couple. Knowing that, you know, we've heard good things about foundations happening down in Scottstown, we, well, actually, I will say that the teachers yet again came to me, this is a teacher-driven initiative. They wanted to bring foundations into third grade, it goes K through three. So we are looking to try to purchase some of the material this year, but moving into next year, getting the full foundations program put in place for third grade. We have a lot of pieces that kind of fit in across our building with all of these. One piece, oh, I'm bussing it, one piece, I have a, one piece we are putting in place because again of the pandemic, we did lose a lot of library books. So we are going to continue funding the replacement of extra library books above and beyond what we normally would. We did purchase quite a few of them this year. In addition to that, one of the initiatives we started pre-pandemic was putting a guided reading library in place at GIS. So it's six copies of books at the session, so you can meet with a small group. We're going to continue purchasing more books. We work with the teachers and librarians to get good, strong trade books that will kind of go along with our curriculum and fill some gaps. And in addition to that, we are looking to purchase more of the books from our team, our Choose Love Champions that have determined what, what books they need for the Choose Love program. So we're going to make sure we have all of those in place for that. So some of the, the pieces we did not fund, again, I'll just throw that again, the Reading Wonder student accounts. Sometimes we put some of that through textbooks, so we're making sure we're removing all of that. We did put waiver SEL in place this year to give a resource for SEL. We are pulling that part out and just strictly going with Choose Love. And then just overall, we're purchasing fewer consumables that are from the textbooks. So we're not buying workbooks. The kids are just doing worksheets all the time. Most of our teachers are really focusing in on Google Classroom digital assignments and kind of group assignments, I'll say. So we're, we're really teaching them how to do more problem solving, hands-on work and less just worksheets. And then in terms of future considerations, again, we're moving towards next generation standards. We know we also have gaps from the pandemic. So we certainly know we need to look at our math curriculum a little bit stronger here. Our social studies curriculum, we're currently using PNW, OTCs in their, their curriculum, but it's something that we would like to shift to a fully digital program and see how we can incorporate that in with Project Lead the Way. We certainly want to explore some type of phonics-based program for fourth and fifth grade in ELA. I mean, Foundation stops at third grade. I'm not very familiar with their other products, but I know that they've got some intervention products as well as some other programs that are out there that can help us. We, you know, I know Mr. Carter and I have talked many times about the writing program, and we see it on some of our state tests and the extended response. We need to kind of strengthen that piece. And that certainly does continue PD with every one of these programs, not just the ones we've already had in place, but every new program we bring in is just going to require some PD and support our staff. And then in equipment, I'm going to kind of mix the, the first two categories together here a little bit, but at this point, funding is only for replacement of the classroom boards, the new line boards, if needed, if they break down. For the past few years, GIS has been upgrading about five to seven of those boards every year already. At the end of last year, I know a lot of these boards were purchased. So we're all updated in GIS now. So really, we only need to purchase things if they break down or there's an issue. So far, they've been pretty good. I know I've got requests for additional 3D printers. We always do a classroom furniture cycle, so we're always replacing several classrooms worth of furniture every year. And then instrument replacement, which is something that unfortunately happens. And then just new initiatives where we really want to get an office computer cycle in place, and it's for all of our offices, guidance and such. So we're kind of on a constant replacement cycle there. And our furniture in the library really looks a little outdated. So we're looking to get something that's flexible and the tables can be shipped and moved as the library needs that. And then just future considerations here, we know that our auditorium is getting more interest in the use in the community. Once we get back into it in the building as well, we have a lot of staff that are looking to utilize the auditorium. So we have, in the past, we upgraded to a laser projector that actually can be seen on the screen now. So the next piece is getting in a light board. The soundboard that we just purchased, we're waiting to get installed because we need some assistance with that, but we just want to do some real updates in the auditorium so it's a usable space and fully functional. And then just in general, equipment needs, obviously, we're moving forward. We want to get away from a computer lab model and work with a collaborative STEM scheme room that is fully usable for multiple purposes. And then we definitely have some locker issues going on in GIS. We'd love to consider just replacing them with cubbies in the walls that are, you know, we don't really need the lockers at this point. So that's kind of everything in a nutshell. Any questions?
I just have one regarding Reading Wonders. So you're just looking to get rid of the monica for Reading Wonders, but looking to keep Reading Wonders.
Yeah, so our, our overall ELA program, our, our belief system, I guess I'll call it, is still following consonant. Now, we're kind of really in the workshop model still. With that, Wonders is our primary source. But the digital accounts, they really were not being utilized by many staff, and it was a lot of busy work on the computer. It wasn't necessarily supporting in-depth learning. And the cost, I think, was something like 15 in dollars per student. So it just was not of enough value when, you know, some of these other programs that I know Jonathan Reddicker and Carter brought in are just much higher value than the teachers utilize.
I'll just a little question on the equipment, you know, the future. So something like that's going to cost a lot of money. It's going to kind of transition the piece from, you know, just a typical computer lab with a bunch of computers, with a more interactive scan, a lot more. So it'd probably be a good idea, I think, about like a roadmap over the next two, maybe three years to kind of build what you want to envision, be a good idea? And just because I know the cost, you'd probably be way prohibited.
Yes.
Do a lot of lots, so.
Yeah, we know that there are a couple challenges and roadblocks with beyond just the cost as well, just the remodeling. There are certainly some power. There's some pieces that would require some remediation and such as well. We did have, I had Mel Mal come in last year and just take a quick look at it with me. He gave us some good advice on how to utilize the space as is for now. So I think we can do quite a bit for the moment, but in the future, yeah, I, you know, my, my whole vision would be like TVs on a wall and the kids can project to it and present it.
And just to jump back, do you have an idea of what that curriculum, you'd like to look at, or you just know that that's an area of focus for you?
It's an area to look at. Looking at our, our scores that I'm able, the assessment data that I can look at right now, we, we see some significant gaps. We didn't see as many gaps in the ELA side of things after the pandemic, but we see a lot of gaps there. And I know I've talked with Dr. Coats a few times about just how we're, we're going to look at it at K six. You know, so we've had some discussion, but there's, there's certainly pieces that we would need to talk about across the.
Outdoor classroom, library?
Yes, we're in the, the beginning stages. It's kind of something that I've had several staff members really wanting to get something in place. The idea is an outdoor collaborative space. And I think, I guess that positive of the pandemic was really that we did get our kids outside a lot. Our grounds, we have some spots that are a little, you know, black more often, but we have a couple spots that the teachers tend to favor. So we've been watching that. So the idea is that we're going to have a space that's, we're not, we're not really sure if we're going to be able, how far we can go with it, but we're looking to possibly get some hardscaping done, some type of a shade or near the trees, and some type of outdoor seating that is flexible enough to shift around in different configurations. I asked our custodian head to pull, pull aside some of the old slate chalkboards for us so we can have like, you know, durable materials out there. And the idea is really just to get the kids outside in an outdoor space to learn. We've even talked about trying to get in some solar panels out there to help do some, you know, some science units and such. So we're looking into some grants, even with the Orange Rockland teacher grant that's out there. And we're, we've had about two meetings so far, so it's a little early, but we're hoping to at least get started this summer. And I'll come back to the board with a bigger proposal on it. But. We're.
I got my future. My future consideration column.
I will say the teachers.
Some of them did say though, like, the Wi-Fi may not be that important if you're going outside.
It just didn't happen to the competition.
Yes. Any other questions?
Thank you.
I have it in front of me too, just in case.
It'll take a minute to relay.
Can we wait? Just jump in?
Alright, I have to get started. It'll jump up and down.
Okay, so I, I have the same. We'll start off with the supplies. So here we, equipment allocation needs to cover the 29 gen ed classrooms, some special ed classrooms. We need some new support materials for E and L classes, and that, that again is like the consumables and things that you need every year, our regular supplies. If our numbers go up, we, you know, we anticipate a little bit here and there that we're going to need a little bit extra. So we put that in there. For SEL, for Choose Love materials, for students and staff, we allocated some money for when the second, before rollout comes, anything that we need to purchase, we can. Special areas and materials and supplies come out of there as well. So again, that's also. So again, that's also music, RPE, anything like that that we need, AIS, fax, general music. So our savings for the defunded is the same as GIS. We're not using the student planners anymore. It was somewhere between five and six thousand dollars. And the students weren't using, we're finding just boxes and boxes of them. So what we did was we did everything digital. And in our Google classrooms, we put in a calendar for them as well as anything from the code of conduct that they needed or any kind of papers they needed, they could print out from there. And it's actually worked out pretty good and quite like GIS, if anyone needs a journal, we do have, we have ordered some like mini notebooks. Only a few students take them, but we always have them. We have extras in the school store for them if they need, as well as in the main office. So we were able to save there. Some future considerations, we would like some updated Project Lead the Way kits. Right now it goes from K six. And we are looking to figure out a way how to implement it completely into seven and eight. I had a wonderful meeting with Mr. Carter today. I've also been meeting with my staff because we'd really like to get it in there, even though it might not be the Project Lead the Way modules right away. We're trying to figure out a way to how to get it in to either our science or our technology, adding more than what we're already doing. So we're trying to think outside of the box for that to add that in. So it's a clear, continual way from K all the way up to K nine. So we're going to need some different kits, some different models possibly, and then to expand on what we currently have. Consumables for any SEL that comes up and/or RSE initiatives. Again, we are looking to set up through some of our technology classes. And then repairs for the courtyard outside because we are setting up work in the beginning stages also of an outdoor classroom. So I don't know if you're familiar, but there's a, we have two courtyards, one that the kids usually work on where there's some picnic tables out there. And then there's one actually that's, you can see for the main office. And it's in the newer wing and we've been using that. We have a student from a high school who's doing an Eagle Scout project. So we're super excited because it's going to be a little bit of like a nice zen kind of feeling for the staff and the students that want to go out to the benches have been wonderful. And it's been utilized so much, it's nice to just see them sitting out there if you're working at your computer or if you're having meetings. It's nice to see them laughing out there and enjoying themselves. So we're looking forward to that as well. I'm meeting with Bruce Sturpries next week to talk about when that's going to get started, but all the sketches are ready, so I'm very excited to see those. Next is the contractual. So same are yearly contractual items. We have the piano tuning, insurance repairs, the kiln for art, we have to repair that on occasion. The lab items, so for our science labs, we might need some replacement. In our fax class, we definitely need appliance service and we will need some new. We're going to need new items in there. We need new stoves and possibly even microwaves. So I added that over into the other section, I apologize. Repairs for our copiers and of course, we hire companies for music. Some of the savings is we have had some reductions in the maintenance for copiers because now we own them, we're not on the rental where then you have to call them in and then they're replaced. So when we call them, it's just a quick maintenance fee, so we've saved a lot of money there. Some of the updates that we're looking for, we also have been updating our auditorium the last couple of years. We ordered a brand new soundboard that's still sitting somewhere in the, I'm not sure which ocean, but we're hoping that it'll leave here for September. So we know that we're going to need some maintenance on that. We also know that once that's in, we're going to be looking for a light board. I didn't add that because I want to make sure there are soundboards. Some equipment considerations, we will need replacement stoves, possibly microwaves for the fax classrooms. And they had asked about adding a dishwasher to learn about different ways to sanitize. And then I also added in that contractual with everything that we're bringing in and everything that we already have, we also have some updated PD costs for some professional bill. With our textbooks. We've been using a lot of eBooks, which has also helped us save some money. Some consumables, you know, our textbooks from a replacement cycle if we need to. We have, we did lose some during the pandemic, but we kept a pretty tight number on, so we have been replacing those. But even as we've been using those, some of them get ripped or, you know, they just go through the wear and tear. So we'll need to update some of those on our replacement cycle. Same with our consumables for curriculum, some for Project Lead the Way, if there's any consumables that we need. Library replacement books, math and focus texts are consumables, reading wonders, reading wonders consumables, and our eBook subscription for social studies, which we're going to be seeing with as well. And looking forward, we're looking to update the text for. Look at my morning, I'm sorry. Changing needs of the students, the spoke after the pandemic, next gen standards show the need to be assessed on textbooks. So just like we have to do a little bit of stuff about math, we definitely see some gaps on the math. So we want to look at what that math curriculum looked like all the way up. And we know that we're going to have to get, most likely get a new per-science text in the next two, three years. So we need the standards as well as update the social studies curriculum. And that also comes with some professional building costs. And then our equipment, some yearly equipment. We are almost at a hundred percent of the boards. We've replaced a lot of the new boards thanks to the board bed, replacing them last year. We still need a couple, there's a few classrooms that still need, that we're working on. So we added those in there, some new classroom furniture. We also would like to get to some of those collaborative desks. We have some in the building, they're very expensive, but our kids love them. And knowing that we're coming back to regular life, we want them to be able to enjoy that again and be able to work together. So we added some of that in there. Some new science tables, the science teachers would like the tables instead of the desks and chairs so that they can do their labs on the tables and that's been working out very nice. We also have a replacement desktop computers that we need for the offices. All on cycle, of course, replacement radios, same as Mr. Pree spoke about. Our radios have been updated a couple of times with the same radio that we refurbished and they're just kind of on their last legs, we've gotten new ones in a while. We need some replacement desks, update the rooms and maximize the space so we can have collaboration. And we also want to do a replacement computer cycle for the guidance counselors. We have some less money that was spent for the new line boards because now most of it is just the upkeep. We only need a couple of boards left. And now that they've been swapped out from the old ones, eventually we won't need any money for us. So we'll have some savings there. And then some safety changes needed for CJ Hooker. We just put the cycle of the Chromebooks that are needed. So we know at this time, we had this conversation in our cabinet. We know that one of our cycles for the Chromebooks is not going to be able to be updated. So I don't want to take anything away from Jim, I'm just going to throw it out, but that's a part of it. We did ask for the security swiping system, more cameras on both inside and outside. We'd like to get the panoramic cameras on the outside so we can see things that are going on out there, even around the building because a lot of times people drive around the building and we can't see what we need to see. Security doors installed back in the front floor of CJ Hooker, we're really hoping for that. So there is a blockade, let's say, before you get to the reader's window. It appears as though they used to be there, so we're hoping we can get something installed back in there just as an extra precaution. Our door buzzer, we'd like the system to be fixed and readers to have some training so that they know how to use the system, but that's already been installed. Replacement computers for the offices, locker replacements, our lockers are pretty beat up. I don't even know if we took the front swap and put new ones. I don't think it would even really fix it, a lot of them are pretty beat up from the inside out. We would like some new radios eventually that are new and not sent through a couple of times to be repaired. Computer lab also, we've talked about for the last couple of years within COVID, but a stop to it, was an overhaul for a redesigned quite a bit since Dr. Webber was talking about diversity initiatives. We've been using that room currently. That is our, what would look like an old school computer lab. And we've been using that when we're doing a lot of the Project Lead the Way because they have the large tables in there. And then just revamping the classroom with some of those newer desks. Just wanted to share that. I've got everything, so any questions?
Just because I see a lot of security things, cameras, door, et cetera. Has there been a security audit to your knowledge? Like have we ever done one? I don't know if that's even been done in the district.
Not that I know of. I've asked for, you know, it comes up every year when you ask your wish list, what could you, what's on your wish list? So these are some things, you know, just to add extra questions and keep people safe when I listen to the staff. And when you go into the other buildings, every building is designed differently. So ours is a little bit different because it's an old beautiful building. So we don't really have the opportunity for the buzzer. And you kind of have to go through, I don't know what it is really, concrete and all kinds of things. So I think it would just make people feel a little bit better to have some extra security put in place for that because you never know who's coming in. So, thank you.
Admittedly pre-COVID, we used to do informal scenarios with local buildings, the troopers every year, but COVID hasn't happened in some of these.
So they have them done in the past?
Yes. The troopers would come in in collaboration with the adults, we did do walk-throughs, one of that saw the building, one of that saw points in the park and on, and make sure. We've addressed a lot of it, but we've fallen behind over the last couple of years.
I just asked you to look at the cameras, are there a lot of blind spots? There are. We did do a walkthrough, I want to say about five years ago. And we were slated to get them. I don't know what happened, I wasn't principal. But we did identify some blind spots that would help us out, you know, because we do have our computer screens up in the areas. But there's always going to be a few blind spots. So the more cameras you have, the better and the least of the chance for some of that stuff back.
I don't want to speak for Jim's there, but years ago, and this has always been a softball that gets tossed between technology and building underground, the server that we had that was hosting the cameras had maxed out in its ability to take on more cameras. We've since addressed that, but every year now it's the extent of one more camera, more cables, one more camera, more cables. Are we maxed again?
Yes, Jim and, Jim Fries and I speak about this somewhat regularly and we are in need of an updated system.
Which, which we did not that long ago already.
Yeah, they just, you know, moving it from the office to the cloud, I think would be.
Which will allow us then to host more classes?
Yes, for sure, yeah. We're just trying to figure out the most efficient, most direct way of using what we've got and pushing it into the future.
Flip the screen back and forth.
That's why I grabbed, I remember, I grabbed this sooner, I said, I've been here before. I'll take this opportunity to also give a shout out to our two high schoolers who is the band on her sister's here as well as our Old County Jazz Festival participants. And we have two divers in championship competition. It's awesome.
Robbie, can you get that?
Does that have a pedicure?
What's that? This is already slated, the board is coming. I can see the stickers and so I'm assuming that's the. That's the layout.
Student Senate is preparing for student senate elections now. So, sorry, really, everybody. They were just bringing up that, I have room like concrete like everybody else. But some special news is that student senate is preparing for student senate elections. So I'm a part of student senate, I'm opposite of student senate, representative of the board. But my plan is to run for the student senate president for the incoming year as a senior. But I promise I could still be twenty things, so you guys will still be seeing me. But I just thought it was insane because, you know, that should come out here and the fact that we're preparing for it, you know, even in March and April is so exciting.
Good luck.
Thank you.
We got you this, it's like a highlight. What's better than that? Twice a month. You can start.
Yeah, I have a copy.
You can start off.
Okay. So similar to the other buildings, our regular supply costs go in towards more empty classrooms that include our nine laboratories, maintaining the daily supplies for our explorers. While they do have more of their old personal supplies, there are more plans that we can move back to in a hands-on collaborative model that we have better access to the blessing included. Certainly replenishment of our art supplies. We did see with COVID, it was very important for the senate to get home and we have to replenish those supplies. Also to fulfill the needs of the new course offerings that we've been able to include in our course hour. This year kind of covers. We will need new dumbbells and the board office, we talked about moving our goals to move from a weight room to a fitness center that focuses on all students, really in the area of physical education that would also complement our athletics, so we can focus on the electives that we walk through in that area. We would also need radios there, and again, they have been on a cycle. But they are used heavily and we have, and we have to use our outdoor spaces more. We found that it's important to make sure even our teachers have those when they're going outside just for basically as our additional security. We'll need to continue to replenish our calculators and we'll be including some of the Inspire calculators because there's different functionality that can differentiate for students of IEPs, some of the functions to allow them greater opportunity in upper level math classes, so giving that additional support to students. And our microbots have been hit, you may have seen them on the website, some videos were up. But these can be used across a curricula. We did use them in the social studies curriculum this year to map things out and it really bridges that space between steam and works on the A and O thing. We were able to reduce a lot of the curriculum posting, moving some of the versions to a digital platform. While we do still have the traditional needs and printing such as exam preparation for graduation or different things within the school, far more communications go out digitally. And so we've seen this is a great area that we can shift to maintain that zero balance over to supplies in the future. As I mentioned, the art curriculum broadening and much greater student interest. We'd like to add to the digital cameras that we purchased last year and have piloted out these courses this year. And twenty additional laptops with Photoshop so that we can really utilize expertise of our teachers in the area of digital design and graphic design. That also affords a greater capability to again become more cross-curricular in the area of what's going on in the student lab, what's happening in math classes and within our business department. As we look to what will become the CTE pathways and we have added the additional computer science classes that are giving the students the skills they need to do those things, we just need to make sure they have the experience to do them. Going out to contractual, by far our biggest contractual cost is our testing services. But this is a testament to the hard work the students are doing, taking so many AP courses and tests, but that's really money well spent. We do have, as you know, we've heard tonight said, accomplished students, student athletes and musicians, the artists, that we want to maintain those registration fees and funding for their competitions. And musical coming up, totally done with how the musical company is, where the proper maintenance of our musical instruments, piano. And moving back to more a hands-on approach in our science labs, what will maintain, give it interactive for some capability of digital labs where students have those career-ready skills, getting back to the hands-on. Getting back to the hands-on labs, such as our DNA lab, where they're doing things in the blue light. Or even just one of the earth science labs, where we'll be at how viruses are spreading. It's important to do those things hands-on, because it makes a learning network. We do want to look at the options contractually when we're evaluating the cost for operating the fitness center. Possibly to have the large equipment done through the contract, to do a very simple, we did the initial outset cost and maintenance down the road, it would keep them to the most recent and cutting-edge equipment available for the students, so that they can be ready, you know, if they're going to do more athletic or if they really wanted to stay a little bit more for some fitness. And again, for more of what we would see as the upcoming visions to standards, we'll see some of that in textbooks later. We will need to take a look at additional professional development, so that we can align our spoken sequels, so there's even greater transparency in what's going on in the classroom, and how that's segmented throughout the year. In textbooks, we have been able to provide all of our student students their textbooks, free of charge for them. So I'd like to be able to maintain that to keep the extra stuff in one of those opportunities for early college credits to our students. We do always have to purchase our sheet music, and it's that nature. We have moved into more digital platforms and looking at how we can utilize textbooks in the digital form. Maintaining classroom set for those that may have that need, but looking at how are these materials more readily available to students? We also are looking for enhanced programming for Laker and Spyro, which are programs that would function within the computer science and student program, to add more adaptability for what the students can do. Including that, of course, our programming on the small and pretty printers. We would be able to, this year, reduce our overall textbook cost, because when we took an audit, took an audit just one year and we were able to capitalize on some of the unattended savings from this year and make sure that it's part of next year's needs for kind of with those funds, so that we can offset that and make sure we're taking the time as we look in the next two, three years to choose wisely for the earth science chemistry upgrades and all of these standards, so that it's kind of an incremental expense. And then again, money is more appropriately categorized for where we'll be to utilize there. Our ELA texts are always placed on a cycle, and exciting that we're looking at a career connections text, so that within our reworking program for students who are interested there, and trying to bring in some of those options that are offered at CTEC right into our GHS, that there'll be a union trade, like a micro ritual that will be available to students who are in that program. Since this is brought in, they're studying the same things that they would have to as a tradesman, and so we're starting to build out that, I guess, avenue within, you know, the high school here, so that students have more opportunity, you know, of sign from CTEC. Certainly we'll need to review revise the social studies textbooks with access of humanities in front, or whether looking at how can we integrate the English curriculum for those, you know, reading, writing skills to go across the curriculum into social studies and compare some collaborative assignments between the two departments. Equipment, certainly enhance our robotics program, as you saw, you've seen there is, you know, some places where the students are still passionate and there's so much interest growing, that we don't want to slow them down. Replacement devices for our clerical staff that began this year, will need an additional five next year, and then that would be on a much lower one to two, over the next two or three years, cycle. We're looking to have new guidance desks or laptops available, because what we've seen in practice is we were asking how they were utilized in the classroom, calling for that our councils are out for students in the classrooms. And they found that when they can flip over the laptop, or it becomes almost like a tablet, there's more interaction with the students, they're more engaged. So we want to capitalize on this, that we saw in order to instances, kind of handling that device and the cross of all of our councils. Then we are replacing our classroom furniture with second faces, we'll have the first set of that in the spring, and then we'll replace probably three classrooms per year, we're also looking into seeing a lot of classrooms as well. We are able to move forward with the drone grant and match those funds. We're looking to start the classroom, and set up for approximately twelve seats, making sure that we can have it properly staffed and get that feedback cycle going from the partners that are participating, the instructor, and the students, so that as we're growing, it's based on what the needs are of those who are servicing. Of course, our fax is busy and always, you know, doing something genius and delicious at the same time. We need a dryer, we need mixers, we need some things in there. But again, as people said, the outdoor experience works, we do want to increase the number of student benches that we have, maintain the ability for students to have a bunch, and also utilize, we can recycle some of our old classroom furniture to create what became four outdoor classrooms that we're heavily utilizing as well. And so to support that, we want to have more durable seating, that will stay on the weather for a longer time. Again, we can reduce our maintenance cost to offset some of these additional assets and equipment, so it keeps that balance. And then as we look to the future, certainly a big focus on shifting our weight room to a fitness center. We will be offering electives where students can choose two different electives, one for them in the spring, that's based on their own interests, we give a greater rate of participation, and it's one bit to their own lives. So in doing so, we looked at the weight room space we have now, and, you know, asked the questions on why is it not highly utilized? Can I like it to be, and by all students, you know, during the day, A P E classes, just to increase that comfort and for all students to be able to go in there, even if they would save themselves, I consider myself happy. We want to really enhance that vision of overall, whether it's in your academics, in your social emotional, or in your physical health at the end of the time of year. We are looking into outdoor greenhouse ramps that will complement the, I'm sure about the sheriff's money right now, where she has garden club, we've been looking into, we've been science elective, that'll complement that, and allow us to, again, integrate within the business department and have some really interesting projects that are all student-driven and student-run. You know, things as exciting as the digital food printer, and some really artistic elements within our chocolateering. And also some optional seating areas for cafeteria. We know that this space has some challenges, and as we all move back in there, we all want to make sure that students feel comfortable if they, you know, might use that for just a break, they're not, maybe just sit right at the table, but there's some different options if they want to group together, and a lot of times we're like, that's during that break time. Our, our last line is, you know, unique to the high school, and that we do have a line for those CTEC, maintain what we've had, so approximately those eighty nine seats, they're roughly somewhere between eleven five and a half thousand people to receive. Certainly costly, and so if we can look to bring more of the opportunity, break it in GHS, we can value benefit the district and our students.
With those seats, is that a hard number, eighty nine seats?
That would be a question. As so far it's been.
So that is what we have always, we've funded over those are target to accommodate. Obviously, if we have instances where we want to increase with areas of other budget surplus, we do supplement where we're not denying the student the ability to attend, but we also work through a rubric every year to make sure students, it's just hand locally qualified students to be able to go. We've also in the past used, and we're not funding this year, we're rolling next year, pockethead seats, so the student doesn't have a special location need, we can do some of that by, as well.
It's not a hard one.
And what we budget for, if we choose to send other students that qualify, we have to find money elsewhere. So, so that money is, yes, a hard, instead of that number that we are budgeting for, which, which prompts us to look for money elsewhere if we send more students.
I'm assuming drone programs are going to be very popular, except we have twelve seats, how do you determine who gets into that class?
So because of the change in curriculum needs, we were first starting it as a club after school, and developing to make sure that we take the time with how that will be implemented, and make sure that aligns with the earth science pathway. So it'll be piloted next year. And then, of course, it'll be twelve seats in the room, there might be other sessions that students could use. But again, we don't want to jump too far ahead and then realize, because I'm speaking with some of the potential partners, and drone programs and other companies that give the FAA training, what they've said is that the technology turns over so very quickly that you have to be consciously purchasing, because you, you want that balance between what is going to maintain the student certification and your skills to keep them job-ready, and something that's long enough for a school district to live with, you know, within the cost of how long that lasts.
One of the other pieces, Ms. Martin and I are all pretty smart, you know, and the question, perfect question, I'm a pro, is the future of graduation pathways. There is a lot of discussion, even though the Regents exam will be administered, let's see, what is the future and date of the Regents? They've talked about some similar commencement level exit exams for graduate, graduate students to New York State. That could mean a complete abandonment of the Regents, with similar to other states' executive criteria. It could mean a modification, but setting the groundwork of program purpose that we've been discussing on an ongoing basis helps us to be prepared that when that comes, I don't think it's if, I think it's when that comes, whatever the modification will be, we'll be prepared with some of the coursework that we're already offering, to be able to offer these pathways. And I'm going to use a bad word for that, to be able to track these students into the directions that they're going to be prepared for, for higher education, for technical schools, military, the workforce, whatever the case may be. We will have already set the groundwork in the high school to be able to do this needs.
I just have one more question, just regarding drone-based education. Has there been any conversation, possibly bringing in speakers more than just maybe once a year? I know that the hidden room is coming up, there's a parents, great presentation, I've seen it. However, I'm just wondering if, you know, not a one and done, and ongoing, has, I see a lot of great curriculum, love to see that stuff, you know, after, after it's in place. Has there been any talk about drone-based education?
Absolutely. We had, later in our, our meeting with ADAC, just this week, they, Team ADAC presented our faculty meeting on Monday. And so we're looking at our comprehensive plan that will attempt to reach out to multiple groups. First, as you mentioned, the initiative presentation that's tomorrow, please, and if it's a seat that hasn't yet signed on, you can still sign on right up to and during the event, that's what we're approaching. We, we're looking to plan out, not just for the rest of this year, but an ongoing partnership with ADAC, where we can utilize their services that also develop ourselves in the high school. What's going to be our prevention ahead of students? Secondly, we will be initiating events that are student-based, and they will most likely be delivered through one of the content area classes, and that's where there's the element change, where the students are also providing information that helps us to design this, and then we realize what the additional needs of the products. We've looked at different preventative technologies, and really trying to also look at our human capital and see where do we need to have to grow at times, but it can be really helpful coming back to the SEL. Time and time again, we look at the root cause of what issues aren't with sleep with students, and it comes back to, to help. If we have students who are participating, or choose a lot of teachers who are well-trained and feel like they facilitate and support students, then I think that we'll start to see that decline, as we're also pushing the prevention, both branches with ADAC and other agencies. We've already had several students participate in T N B, it's a program that we recommend, when there may be something that they're, you know, down with in school, you know, we certainly want to first address what the issue is, you know, whether it's a substance abuse issue, address that first. We understand that the behavior is a result of that, I would venture to believe, and solve the issue. So to answer your question simply, there should be four to five more things that are coming up this third year, and then you'll see, see whether we can have a PD plan or an academic plan for our prevention.
From the fiscal side of things, ADAC is funded through accounting, and it comes to a very cost-effective, and it's a business.
Thank you. Thank you, Michelle.
Very good, Principal, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I'll point down Mr. Redeker and Mr. Sterrett.
Oh, I just read myself. Before this stuff comes up, click and let it fix with you.
So before I turn it over to Mr. Redeker and Mr. Sterrett, I'll give Mr. Sterrett all of the credit for inviting Mr. Redeker tonight. Mr. Redeker is taking the omen share of helping to facilitate the use of our software budget. You're going to hear from them, how they have centralized software purchases, and very efficient, very effective. We're looking at usage, Mr. Carter joked with Mr. Redeker the other day, that he's become the overseer and the gatekeeper, if you will, of the software programs, that it looks at usage pretty much in a database of twenty-four hours a day, so we're keeping watching out for interest in the best way possible. And at the end of the presentation, and also with Mr. Sterrett, we'll talk about the hardware side of the house and the backbone of our IT network and infrastructure at the same time. Gentlemen, I'll turn it over to you.
Thank you, Dr. Coats, and board members. First thing we're going to start with, if I was to dovetail nicely coming out of the building, is to look at how we're using software for the instructional side of things, so that's sort of the thread here tonight. As we look at computer software, one of the big changes that's not highlighted here that we did, done, started two years ago with running ClassLink as our single sign-on solution, as well as one of our security platforms. That also does keep track of one of, a lot of our metrics of student usage. It's also protected, at least at the staff level, with two-factor authentication and that kind of thing. It's very nice for our faculty and staff, especially at our younger levels. We've heard for years that kids can remember passwords and login and all that kind of stuff, so now that's pretty much a single sign-on solution for them, which is great. In our funding requests, we are upgrading some of our instructional software lines, is, but maintaining a wonderful level, a robust platform, I just counted, I think we have about fifteen solid software licenses that either span two buildings or more, many of them are disrequired licenses. And the philosophy that we've looked at for purchasing those type of tools has really been escalated through the pandemic over the past two years, the philosophy's changed a lot. And when we kicked off really the remote learning time in the first part of, you know, that hybrid year and everything like that, we picked up a lot of software titles that were curriculum drivers, like you could log in, say, here, do this, or practice and learn, because we didn't know how remotely structured would, we had to plan out. But we really saw our teachers sort of, as soon as they could, to sort of put that to the side and say, no, I, I have content knowledge and I have materials already, and that's, I don't need those things. So that's a really great testament to our faculty and staff, and the work that they're able to do with their content delivery. So a lot of these tools, our philosophy is to think about tools instead of content providers. So we're talking about using the, the technology to make things, right, to screencast and to do different activities rather than just consume content. So that's sort of the philosophy with those platforms. I just released last month, a Google site of all the resources that they, that we have, how to log in, what they are, because teachers did take a lot of time this year to pick up on it, because they really needed to get back in person with a lot of hands-on activities, which was great. But they're starting to ask for more, we're starting to do more professional development as well for the end of the spring, and that's really focused, well, into the spring, that's really focused on stuff that we're committing to purchase in this budget to have for next year as well. So we're not going to leave anyone behind and learn something and take it away. So that's, that's very important to us. That does leave some money in budgets at building levels for certain codes, smaller lines, for some of the instructional technology that they might want at the very minutia, if there's one grade level, one teacher. You know, we have one physics teacher, if the physics teacher needs the software, there is some money in the building line for those kind of requests, smaller dollars. We are looking to really change our ones-one initiative, the pandemic really forced our hand up. The pandemic really forced our hand on that and we're very, we were able to respond very quickly. We moved forward this year with sort of a hybrid approach to some of that. And what we saw with our one-to-one approach is that Scottstown Avenue School and Ocean Intermediate have chosen to assign Chromebooks to students so they are theirs, but they're, they live in carts for the most part. So they can take them home if they need to, but they don't need to, they can leave them in screen. So that if a kid was quarantined or what have you, they had access. And then starting in sixth grade, they had a cart, a Chromebook or personal device they're allowed to bring in throughout the days, all and in school. So next year, we need to purchase a lot of Chromebooks. That is a big cost in our budget this year as a funded request because, if you recall, a number of years ago, we bought a lot of Chromebooks in one big shop and they're starting to age out. So we have a plan where, based on use, we're gonna move some around. Some of the newer ones, we're gonna move some around, for instance, at Scottstown. It is appropriate, they can use them all day, they need to use them at four times during the day. So we're gonna reduce some there, move some around and then look to buy a, basically at a grade level of Chromebooks at, for GIS, a grade level for CJ Hooker and a grade level for Ocean High School and begin a cycle to do that. So we really have to start a cycle somewhere. It does mean that with this current budget that we will be, some students will have some older devices for a few years until we can physically get to the point where we can just start really catching up. So that, that is, if you look closely at the numbers, that's what you'll see in a Chromebook line. When you look at those, yeah, and so one of the things you'll notice too, if you've been around for a couple of years, there is no, again, those, those software lines are very small in the buildings. That's what that third floor plan was up there. When you look at the not funded or defunded, a lot of reduction has only, has come based on items that were not being used, based on those metrics that we looked at and surveying the staff for what's being used or not, as well as the principals. And then some of our codes are shifted. So whereas they were building level lines, now they are in OS's code because OS's either picked them up and so we get, or they, yeah, they became available on OS's and that was, that helped with us with state aid and that kind of thing. Looking at the future considerations, we do, are going to need to consider in that line, funding to, I'd like to sort of have a line to look at where how do we fund new and innovative things that are coming. So instead of saying, hey, we're gonna get this for a grade level or whole district initiative, how do we look and explore what's upcoming and do? You know, instead of getting stay relevant and keep trying things out. We also want to increase professional development opportunities, maybe go out of district for more staff members. I'm then fortunate to be able to go to like a nice state conference up in Rochester pretty much every year. But how do we get more of our instructional staff learning some of that outside of the districts? We offer a lot inside, but it's good to get outside to see that. And we're, this is gonna dovetail into Jim's presentation, but to talk about our computer equipment. We're also gonna look at replacing some outdated desktops in classrooms. They're starting to slow down and to just get bogged down with, especially with any live streaming and video work and that kind of thing. We've done a lot of work with peripherals and things already, but those things are always a cost added as far as things get broken and that kind of thing. And again, taking a look at that hardware, same idea, is funding some other things as far as what's new and innovative that's out there. And if we look at our line for Jim's team in the, in the network technician side of things, it's possible that we, we don't really have a line for professional development for those owners to go out and learn what's new and relevant in their field as well. So if we had something dedicated, that might be nice in the future, that's just, again, one of those future considerations. I'll pass some questions.
And I think you'd be remiss if we didn't mention Edlo 2D.
Oh, yes.
All the software that we do acquire and use is all vetted to meet and make sure to meet the education, the Edlo, whatever.
Yeah.
Or Edlo 2D requirements and mandates in regard to protecting personal, personally identifiable information.
My September and, end of August and September was really not in an instructional support role as sort of defined in my job. It was really as managing our Edlox and compliance piece. And so I, I have put a line item into the request to look at a software that I'm gonna pilot this spring and see if that will help us manage some of those things as well.
And you can even see a list of our approved software through our class line. If you go to our website, I believe there is a list that has been tabulated, put together and you can see what we use and what we can use and, and it's just all good information. Just more information gives you a deeper insight into what we've got going on here. Speaking of deep, in regard to the heart and the nerve center of our computer system, that's our instructional technology and infrastructure. Should I take this one or you go on?
Yeah, it's not coming in.
All right. Go ahead, get out of there. This guy. So currently, the... We're gonna replace this, dude, this is not on my list.
The notes are looking great on the live chat, by the way, they're out. I just scrolled up on my.
So as you can see, in instructional technology and infrastructure, we have costs that relate to everything that, that keeps us going. And data security is of the utmost importance, of course. So many of our, you know, funding lines go to data backup and recovery, our tech support request system to allow our community to ask for help when they need it. Print management system, so we can maintain and try to be as efficient as possible in our printing needs. Voicemail licensing, mobile device management systems, cloud and cybersecurity systems, our email encryption system and then just various license and maintenance contracts that are necessary. There's, I could, I could describe more. Do you wanna hear more about how we back up our systems and?
How do you back up yourself? How, where, do we use our own SAN or are we roaming it up to the cloud or?
Yes, well, right now we have a combination of local backup with, with beam and also a disaster recovery closer, with OS's. However, I am talking to a contractor to expand our local backup. We're probably gonna use some AWS services for, you know, just for safekeeping, just to try to prevent anything or try to recover from anything that we can't prevent. That's really what we're shooting for. And then solutions for our tech support, paper cut for our print management, JAM for our mobile device management.
And, I'm sorry, just the mobile device man, how many mobile devices are you managing outside? Because JAM is usually an Apple product.
Yes.
We have Google.
I need all Apple products.
Okay.
Google, Google manages the lion's share. But yes, so we have less than 100 Apple devices, but they're, so it has made it, it's a worthwhile investment.
Yeah, no, I was just curious, how many Apple devices? It is, the Apple devices primarily are at our high school art program as well as, we had purchased a few. Architects? What's that? Sorry, architectural drawings, stuff like that, probably, I don't know. Yep, and so, but, and, and a lot of them are using the Adobe Creative Cloud as well as whatever else on Mac as well, built in. And in speaking with the art teachers, you know, one of them, one of our recent hires has recently come from the field of professional art and she's like, you know, Mac is the industry standard. And so that's sort of where we went and we're not necessarily filling that whole world with Macs, but having exposure is also very good. So it's not a huge amount. We also do get a few tablets here and there, like iPads for managing a certain device that need that interface. So it's not a lot. You need to be able to manage those.
Yeah, 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 so the JAM is, yeah, so that's been doing well and it's expandable. Then in regard to, I'll just continue down our, our funding request column. The COSER agreements, these are some of the services that we get through Orange or OS's, our internet connectivity, our, which also includes network security, our web filtering systems, security awareness training, everybody's favorite. That's a simulated phishing email that gets sent out to all the faculty and staff once a month. I get nothing but click feedback from that.
I hope the click rate is only 5%.
The phishing campaign is starting to include our admin's names too, so that's kind of interesting, I like that.
Who does OS's use by chance?
We're actually getting it through the RIC InfoSec IQ. And it's been, you know, it's, I don't know if there's better out there, but this is very effective. And I believe, I firmly believe that it is fulfilling the intended response. I think people are, people get angry, but at the same time, they're learning something. Not everybody will say that.
I've not been caught yet, just for the record.
Disaster recovery, as I mentioned, we subscribe a couple of servers there that is backed up at Orange or OS's. So if things go horribly wrong here, we still have that. And then software licenses related to district-wide computer functionality, our Microsoft Canvas license agreement, some system licenses, the web filter, which I mentioned. And.
And this is all through OS's, they're, what is contracted from them?
Data processing, that, that section is all through OS's, yes. So again, as, you know, John mentioned, we do get state aid and, and support from them. Also, oh, that's another thing in regard to the software, any software we get through Orange or OS's, we don't have to do the work for the Edlo 2D compliance because if OS's makes it available, then Edlo 2D is covered. So that's also a, here.
Yeah, the one we can offload, as long as the product works.
Absolutely, absolutely.
Cloud-based, something that takes some pressure off of you, so you don't have to server.
Like you're preaching to the choir.
I mean, cloud is not even cheaper, it's probably about the same, but at least you're not, we're not supporting the hardware. We're not supporting the software updates and spending time on that, so.
Exactly. In regard to future considerations, our VMware virtual environment is aging and will need to be considered for upgrades and replacements for some components. So that's, you know, certainly coming in the near future. Always looking for security enhancements, just there's always something that we can do more to make ourselves safer. The expanding the outdoor wireless connectivity. It, it is something that we've been working on in high school, has, I, I think you could probably see a little glow from space at the high school. There's so much wireless throughout that building and now outside too. We have it from the baseball field, I hope it hits the tennis courts to the, to the practice field and, and outside the, what would that be? Door one, no, door four, front door. So we've expanded that this year. Middle school has one outdoor access point that overlooks the field, the softball field and the football field there. And I hope that coverage is pretty good, hope we can expand that. Intermediate school in Scottstown do not have any outdoor wireless currently. But if that's something that we all think would be a benefit, and I know Matt mentioned an outdoor space, would that be kind of undoing the outdoor space if all of a sudden we said, okay, kid, go outside and open your, open your devices? But I guess as long as it's there, you know, they can choose to use it or not to use it.
I think it'd be, you know, you know my stance on it. It's always been available. They go outside and they can take their Chromebook and do a class and there's available space that's relaxing and comfortable for kids. I, I don't see why not, the, the access points aren't that expensive. We're talking, you know, less than a thousand dollars, you know, for an access point. Maybe cheaper if you go through OS's or if you're dealing with Francisco Alves.
Yeah, it's certainly doable. It's, I guess it's the principle, maybe you want your kid, maybe as they go outside, you wanna have them shovel instead of.
Instead of a device.
Well, they're, they're not looking to be managed.
You're saying actor, counter, to pay you.
Why you hard on me?
He's not that big, he's fixing the sidewalk.
And also for future consideration is the, the fiber optic cable. We have, we own the fiber optic cable and it's buried directly in the ground that connects all four of our buildings to the, my best estimate would be that it was sold in 1995. So there it is, fiber optic cable, means.
Don't keep hitting it too.
We had an incident this summer.
I'm not kidding.
No, we did, we did, we had an incident earlier in my tenure here that we broke the line. We had to, to a great cost, had to repair it very quickly earlier this summer. Mr. Fries and I have already discussed the possibility of, if we have resources at the end of this year, perhaps burying a conduit from at least the back of the canics out to the first junction box at Scottstown Avenue. Jim and I even had some conversation, is conduit appropriate because of the heat that's generated by the traffic that goes to those cables? But we have to start to look forward to what can we get done in pieces. And it's not just that leg. You then have what runs up to Scottstown, you have what runs up to the high school. Eventually this cable's gonna fail and we wanna try to be ahead of that before it does. It's aging and it's aging quick and that's not, that's not an inexpensive job.
Where's the crossing?
Uh, right, you know, the cross one, yeah. And so the problem is, it's not gonna support higher bandwidth speeds. That's all you can do about a gig, you know, we're looking at 10, 100 gig, 40 gig is available now. So as we increase stem and all that, obviously the bandwidth is gonna go up. But E-Rate, I know it's based on the previous launch, but E-Rate will give us, they, they will, that is a approved expense that they will cover, even if we get 10, 15% out of that, that's still a huge savings, you know, to buy that dark fiber. And that's totally covered.
When we do max out with E-Rate as well.
We already do.
Depending on what we buy and if it's isolated from year to year, there, there's no reason that if this is not a, if this is a district priority, not to leverage our E-Rate availability.
Yeah, just wanna just, absolutely, something that's there and.
It, it's, it's a need, it's not a want at this point. We have to start looking for replacement of some of this. I, I will say, just the repair alone, the sum of the works.
It's gonna be substantial.
Well, it was not the break this summer, it was Iowa pit because it was an emergent repair. And it's not something that we could do in that.
Well, I think you get around the hassle like you're looking at, they lease it, but they manage, you know, meaning if it breaks, they're gonna fix it, it's probably a deal instead of.
Yeah, that's, that's how this building is connected from the building down, we lease it from around our castle actually, so.
But they don't, they won't repair it if it breaks?
Well, this was, this is Ocean property, direct buried, got in the way of the digger and.
And that's when we were really like, wow, this, this looks really old, this stuff.
And so, yeah, displacing was done well, but.
Which, we, we did address a lot of that internal in the building, I think 2016 of that project, the external cable in the back of the building.
Now it's, now it's, how deep have we dropped that, Jim, it's a.
It's dropped to close to two feet now, but it was about four inches. That's why we're not giving kids shops.
Over the 20-plus years, 25-plus years, so. Jim told the guys not to cut the grass, I'm sure.
So. There's one piece in the, in the computer hardware side that I did forget to leave out as a request to think about. During the remote learning period, we bought about 100 laptops for teachers that did not have a device for appropriate remote instruction. They just didn't have a solid Windows or whatever, I guess their Windows devices, but to teach from. Once we came back to school this year, we collected them, we put an application out for teachers who think they probably might need them. And then so we've given them out, but also a lot of our older Chromebooks have gone out for teacher use. We still have some to give. But one of my visions for the district might need to consider, how do we provide that for teachers to have a mobile device as part of their, as part of working to go ahead?
So my question for you is, out here you have, we're listening to desktops. We heard earlier that the Agence Counselors want laptops. So my question for you is, instead of replacing desktops with desktops, can you set up docking stations rooms, give the teachers either? the teachers either very good Chromebooks, not the Chromebooks we give the kids, the higher end Chromebooks for a laptop, therefore they need to go remote, they pick it up, they're taking it home, one device, one room.
I think that's a great idea, Jimmy may have thoughts too, but one of the considerations I have is that a lot of our teachers share spaces a lot, so if that's the shared space and you can take it to go to a meeting or a study hall and you have to go and you're taking the device instead of getting it to the room, now that's not there, but.
Sign that laptop to each person, the docking stations are universal, you have a lot of those.
The, um, desktops are also valuable, we use all in one desktops, we, it encompasses one system for the interactive flat panels, just because everything is hardwired to the interactive flat panel, so you walk in and you sign in and everything works.
That's where the docking station.
Is that your experience?
Yeah, occasionally I do use like my teachers' computers and, and they're. But yeah, um, like the desktops, if that's what you mean.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
So I'll just sign in and everything's there.
Yes, and we definitely have been speaking of, if there were a device, ideally it would be a higher end Chromebook because the Chromebooks are just a dream to manage and no maintenance, you know, and if they provide all the, you know, all the computing power that a teacher could need for their, you know, whatever they're trying to do, that would be good, but we know that some do need more than a Chromebook.
What about the situations where there is a void phone in that room or in that space? Are they docked in the back of the desktop computers?
Some of them are.
Just for, just for ethernet connectivity, it wouldn't affect the docking or anything like that, that, that should be totally fine.
Yes, as long as there's, uh, the cord available, I mean, the phone gets the power over each head and the, and the dock simply get to jack on there.
We'd have to look at what's the best, what best device, I would, I say too, a lot of districts are using Chromebooks for teachers, but maybe still having a Windows machine for your all in one with a DVD drive, thanks to teachers still using it, it's still the right answer, so.
Or just more software options, we have a Windows based or Mac machine that teachers can do a lot more with Chromebooks or something like that.
And so I'm anticipating next, next school year, if this is in a teacher consideration line, it's not something we budget, or put up, uh, next school year in the fall, we're going to have to sort of reallocate and do, play the game of who gets what again too, so that's sort of where we're at on teacher devices and it's the, a lot, a lot of people are using their own devices too, but that has some limitations on our EYOD as well. But that's something I forgot to mention, I think is valuable to have.
What are we doing on the replacement, are we all with the, to the first grade names? Can they carry it through, that's not what the plan was?
I want to come back all the way to the beginning of that conversation, the dialogue that we have had to make sure that every student has a device available, um, grade five and up to be able to take with them at all times, when they enter that grade level, we're trying to get our purchasing cycle to the point where that cohort gets a device that stays with them, that's their device for the next four years. When they reach eighth grade, they get enough, they would carry that to the high school as well, that becomes their personal device that they keep. Again, that would still give us some inventory, as things continue to age, to be able to stay in the buildings, I forgot it today, I need it in a classroom, I need it in a lab, whatever the case may be, but this now assigns the device to the student, it mitigates need based on if students have sick, they travel, they're out for musicals, or whatever the case may be, they have the device available to them. The challenge that John spoke of very well earlier, we made a massive purchase about seven or eight years ago, managing our inventory, just that one, seven years ago, where, where we, where we get to that point where we're now managing it well to meet the needs of those incoming cohorts, but still addressing all of these other needs that we spoke about tonight, that's going to be the tricky part to, to follow the, the resources down to get.
And if I could just put a point of clarity, we're actually looking at starting in grade six and nine and not grade five, because it's worked very well at GIS to just have carts in the rooms, they use it as their home base, they go to specialty, come back, that's their home base, so in the classes when they start moving for all their periods of the day in sixth grade, that's when we give that to them, we have three year cycle, and then that fourth year that goes back to another, you know, allocation, and then in ninth grade you get a new one every year, and we kind of started that this year, the ninth graders all got new Acer Chromebooks this year, um, and so it actually would be like the second year of that device.
What about the service on that and updates, is it three year, four year?
The Acer is, I think, till twenty twenty-six.
That covers in three.
Yeah, yeah.
And we, we would want to look at some sort of, uh, whether or not it's insurance that's optional for parents as they're going to be into this, or, uh, what is the repair plan they've looked at?
Yep.
But we're going to want to add sort of a contract or, is that what it is?
Uh, yeah, a repair plan that we, we, uh, that they, basically the service, you know, if, we can, we can figure that out, make it some repair services available.
The good news is this year on our inventory management is that our asset management for Chromebooks is that we're seeing far less damage than we did in the past year. We had a major crisis when kids were at home and going back and forth and, and that, um, we had, did have people sign an agreement, uh, liability, uh, we have the business office actually invoicing families for broken Chromebooks or lost Chromebooks when it came through today, um, we're also doing that on a depreciated value scale. So the devices, normal, this device that are bidding first thirty bucks, you know, honestly, that's a little retarded at that point because it's outdated. So, um, we talked with the vendor about that, and that's what they've done, and the, the year old device is, you know, still four hundred dollars, which is a nice device, but that's, just for frame of reference, the numbers are far less, maybe, say, lower than fewer than thirty are being reported apart this year.
So it's going to take about three years to get a new cycle?
I would say for high schools, since we basically started this year, yeah. There'll be a gap in our plan, the way it looks, it'd be that, right now it looks like the eighth grade might be the, the longest kid on the, on the plan. But we can adjust it, we'll have to meet with people, look at it, you have interest, but, you know, sort of where we're at.
What about EYOD, do we, are we allowing students to bring their own device?
In grade six through twelve, um, but it is, we've requested that it's not used with handheld like iPads and cell phones.
That's right.
Because it's for productivity.
Right.
Uh, Chromebook, we're giving you a Chromebook, you can bring in your MacBook if you want, but it's not for games and whatever else.
There's a way we can get, work with somebody for a vendor with discounts and to, you know, hey, you don't want to lose a Chromebook and you want to get yourself ready for college.
Right.
Um, you know, maybe this would be like a junior kind of thing, I don't know, but my son's laptop lasted for six years and he's still using it, so they're, they're pretty, they're pretty good, you buy a decent laptop these days, it'll last, so I don't know, that's.
Generally vendors do offer student discounts, I mean, just.
Yeah, that's true, that's true.
For, for faculty as well.
I'm so far out of the whole student thing, I just start to forget.
Yeah, are we doing anything in here for repairs, church developments, training, are we doing some of that now?
Sure, so we've started, um, this spring, we did, we haven't done any in-person staff development, parent development in the past two years, um, well, really since the beginning of the pandemic, um, I've restarted, um, teacher staff development, um, I'm looking at a calendar for what that looks like for my family and for other things, certainly other people are able to teach staff development as well. One of the things we've noticed, uh, as I put things out, is that there was not, even though people ask and say there's interest, there's not, we just follow through with it, because they're all busy and leave these crazy lives. So, uh, we also right now currently have like five thousand licenses for Otis, which is an online staff platform for learning that parents can use, um, put some PR out about that, um, twice I think, um, I think maybe ten people have signed up. So, uh, you know, we're certainly considering to offer it, but, um, we have not seen a great turnout.
Maybe we're better off just doing like a training video and posting it, you know, reading parents, you know, tell your parents.
Yeah, but one of, one of the really great things that we've done for families is that a lot of their classroom teachers already have that, you know, so they're pushing it out through their classrooms and not like from the district voice, um, so that's really great, teachers making their own videos, having an app get things, so a lot of questions are being handled there. Um, the one thing that we've done that's been very nice and slowed down quite a bit, but it's available, is that there's still a parent tech forum for our loaner devices that they can fill out and will be notified if they have a concern they can't access wifi, software's not working, so it's an external thing for families as well, and sometimes service questions like, so how do I use the software, come through that as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. Last but not, at least for this evening, I'll invite Mr. Chaukey for a quick.
First of all, uh, thanks for being captain of audience and appreciate being here and seeing everyone. Athletically, uh, when we look at the supplies, we're basically just talking about general rollover, uh, we do have a uniform rotation system, uh, next year would be the fall sports that we look at closely for uniforms, uh, the acceptance of that would be the baseball team, the baseball team fundraised for uniforms about five years ago and they're due for their, uh, new set, uh, next year. We are getting increased participation, uh, projection, certain sports, uh, certainly football, uh, I think our number is going to be way up in the next a couple of years, our modified football team had about forty-five participants this year. Track is picking up participation and, you know, our generally strong programs like soccer are increasing but remaining strong. Uh, basketball, uh, boys' basketball had over a hundred students try out for our teams this year. So there is increased participation, increased, increased participation, uh, obviously the quality of the program should increase as well as the number, numbers increasing. In terms of contractual, uh, you know, again, just a basic rollover, we have, uh, ambulance coverage at our, uh, football games, uh, police at some football games, uh, and boys' basketball games that are also, uh, return fee, estate return fee expenses, facility fees, uh, that encompass your swim facility, uh, the use of the golf course, the ski facility and the bowling alley for our bowling team, uh, conferences and other items that would be contractual line, and again, it's just a general rollover. In terms of equipment, um, Mr. Smart did a very good job in talking about upgrading the, the weight room. Our weight room, uh, to be nice, is archaic, the equipment's archaic, uh, weightlifting, uh, weight training has been part of athletics, it's increasing every year in terms of how important it is for our athletes, but more importantly, our school body, uh, to change it and transition from a, an athletic weight room to a weight room and a general fitness area, uh, not only encompassing, uh, what we're making of in terms of PE electives, but in terms of giving students exactly what they want. I've been to some schools where we've had PE electives and it's amazing to see the amount of interest that the students have in physical education, because there are a lot to choose what they want to do and they come in invigorated and, and ready to roll in terms of what they like to do. Uh, I might, I put down two additional radios, uh, you're probably aware, with our facility, radios that seem to be the.
I'm going to buy a radio. A next investment.
With our, the use for our facility and the, the crowds, uh, we probably could use one or two more radios in terms of security and, and functioning at, at, at that, and I'm sure you're aware, we've been very fortunate this year, we, uh, hosted the Class A, the Class B football championships, uh, we bailed out the, uh, state soccer tournament, they had problems over at Milltown Field, and within a two hour notice, uh, we renewed two state, uh, soccer games, and they were so impressed with our facility that they've, uh, signed up for two games next year and four games the following year, so I think that's great for our community, uh, probably great for our community businesses, and, uh, it was very, very well received as was the football. We also are hosting this spring, the, uh, sectional track meet and league track meet. So people love our facility and when they come here, they're very pleased and, uh, they want to come back. Basically that's it, I have a few for any questions.
Just a real quick question.
Yes.
Describe the process for returning the home equipment, has that improved?
We're, uh, trying to improve, yes. There are, there were some sports that, uh, we invested a lot of time in this year to collect uniforms and, uh, the coaches are very much aware of that, uh, it was very easy to collect uniforms at the end of the season, even if the coach has to wash them themselves, but at least you know where to pack. And, uh, you know, I, I understand that some of you seniors want to keep your uniforms, but, uh, there's room for improvement at what was done in the past, I guess.
So one of the things that Mr. Chaukey asked me about this, as we reviewed the presentation prior to tonight, I think the fact that we see general rollover is not necessarily bad, I think the district has made a very significant commitment, not only to our facility but to our program at the same time, and to have that dialogue with Mr. Chaukey from a new vantage point to look at work on the expansion of the program and to have that confidence that what the district has committed to our athletic and our physical education program is a good thing, and to have that confidence that we continue to support our programs is excellent.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
So, at our next meeting, uh, we will hear from buildings and grounds, transportation, and people personnel services, if I can, uh, work with our school lunch program as well, I will ask Mr. Molnico to, uh, be here, even though the school lunch program is a, a self-funded program, just so the board has a, a good snapshot of where we stand. So, Mr. Linden is, is here with us remotely tonight, and I don't know if the board has any separate line item questions for Mr. Linden or anything that you would request of him, uh, we do have him in remotely, he's on Zoom with us tonight, he's here to answer any questions before I move on to my last two budget items.
Have we always had a line or lines for lottery, commercial gaming and VLT lottery? I, I don't remember seeing those.
Did you hear that question, Phil Lemon? You're, you're on mute, Rick, sorry. Rick, you're on mute. Now, now I have to come up and mute, hold on one second. Okay, now we have it, there we go.
Yeah, so the individual lines, you see there's four of them, they're kind of highlighted like a brownish color, basic Formula A, lottery A, commercial gaming and VLT lottery A. Those are all part of the Formula A, the state just divides them up in that way so they can show that they're actually giving lottery money to the school district, but before lottery existed, all four of those would have been just combined and basic Formula A.
I've, I've just never seen it.
Nah, I've received it.
Nah.
Thank you. Any other questions for Mr. Linden? Okay, thank you. Rick, thank you, uh, we'll, we'll have you hang on until I'm done with my last two pieces, if that, if that's okay?
Sure, that's fine, shall I go back to yours?
That'd be great. Okay, so there's two additional items, and, and one is more of a follow-up that Mr. Pucci introduced earlier, as the board has been discussing, it is, uh, our intent to have placed on, as a proposition during the annual budget vote, a small capital improvement project. As a reminder to the board, we have available four million eighty-two thousand five hundred fifty-eight dollars, uh, between Esser and Carissa grant money directly, aided through the school district, which we have state approval to receive, we have five million dollars in capital reserves. Also today, Mr. Carter and I were able to make a call to, uh, the testing company that we use for some of our COVID testing to ensure that the billing will, will now come from this pot of money, and they affirmed that today, so there is an additional two hundred and seventy-three thousand thirty-six dollars available to, uh, the district through a county grant, that would give us a total of nine million three hundred and fifty-five thousand five hundred and ninety-four dollars available to appropriate towards this capital improvement project. One of the other pieces that is, and we discussed this with the board before, that is included in the operational budget, is a million dollar transfer to capital that could allow us to complete even additional facility work, uh, in addition to that. One of the pieces that I will finalize with, uh, legal counsel is how we break referendums to. to ask the community, the voters for approval for this money. But again, I just want to reiterate for any of those people that are still watching, the importance of we're not asking the community for any additional borrowing to complete this work. This work will be solely dedicated infrastructure work. We talked about heating and cooling and depending on the bids, where they come in and the timing of the work pending community approval, we would look at how much roofing we can complete starting at Scottstown and perhaps moving on to G I S and all of that. We'll make sure that we continue to communicate this out to the community as well. Ms. Gore has some ideas on how to start to raise some proposals and some videos as well. If the snow stays away, she was hoping to bribe Mr. Rediker into bringing a drone one day, perhaps do a flyover over some of the roofs. We've come a long way with drones since the first day that I got a call from Chief Wada about a drone flying around. I had to ask Mr. Rediker where it came from. We're in a much better space now with bill and ordinance at the same time. The third item that we wanted to share with the community as well, and the board has discussed this also, is the creation of a new capital reserve fund. Capital reserve comes from efficiency savings that happens throughout the year. So essentially, we're creating or we're asking the voters for authorization to create a personal savings account, if you will. It's not a personal savings account, it's a district savings account. Depending that we exhaust the reserves that we have on hand for the purposes of capital, we want to make sure that we have the ability, if the money is available moving forward, to start to save again. This is a great solution that mitigates borrowing, it prohibits us from having to go back to the voters in the community to ask them again. The board had talked about a total, a cap of $10 million they asked for. Again, it's not that we're putting $10 million in the bank, it's that we're asking for the ability to save up to that amount over time so that when we need to replace another roof, when we need to do paving, when we need to put new windows in, that again, we have the resources to be able to do that. Those again are all specific things we've talked about putting on with the annual budget vote that we need to communicate well with our budget strategy this year. Again, that people will see these different line items when they come in to vote this year. Again, just for clarification, to go over what Mr. Pucci said as well, while we will work towards a zero percent on the levy, some of the other pieces that will be in the budget this year, different from what we've seen in the past, just because of the position where the budget stands, we will be, it will be proposed by new buses this year, but also this budget proposes to purchase those out of the operating budget, but in addition pays off the current bus bands, the bus borrowing that we have. So it allows us to not take on some of that debt at the same time. Unless we hear otherwise from the board, we'll continue to proceed with that strategy and this operating budget.
That's correct.
Very good.
I think the one change there, further clarification is, whatever capital reserve fund we try to establish, it's gonna take many years to fund, depending on our operational efficiencies. And given where cost is today to do any project, a three million, a four million, a five million dollar capital reserve doesn't get you very far. So that's the reason we're looking to take it ten million, which could take us three, four, five, six years to fund.
Or longer.
Or longer.
Absolutely.
I got confidence in your efficiency.
Well, if we go back to where the state stands right now, with fully funding the Foundation A formula, from a revenue perspective, the twenty-two, twenty-three budget should be sound, the twenty-three, twenty-four budget should be sound, it's when we get out to twenty-four, twenty-five, when the State A formula is fully funded and our revenue starts to decline, we're going to have to look more critically, even than we do now, at our expenses to make sure that we can keep the tax levy down to a reasonable ask for the community at that time.
And I think that's one thing we are doing better than previous years is planning not on a yearly basis, but on a three, four, five, six, seven year basis so we can have a plan that's not a shock to our community, um, one given year. And I'm confident that we're on a right path there.
Great. I'm done. I can ask Mr. Linden? Allow Mr. Linden to sign off?
He can sign off. Thank you, Mr. Linden.
Mr. Linden, thank you for being with us. I think we're all good, we're gonna move on to the other business items.
All right, thank you.
Stay well, sir. Take care. Yes, sir, thank you very much.
All right. All righty. Okay, next on agenda is the consent agenda. I need a motion. Shannon, Delly? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Marion Herring, grade two teacher, effective June 30th, 2022. Ms. Herring has been with the district for 21 years. Be further resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Andrew Krish, mathematics teacher, effective June 30th, 2022. Mr. Krish has been with the district for 30 years. Be further resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Diane Winslow, A I S teacher, effective July 1st, 2022. Ms. Winslow has been with the district for 20 years. Be further resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Lisa Brent, guidance counselor, effective September 23rd, 2022. Ms. Brent has been with the district for five years. Be further resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Robert McEntee, physical education teacher, effective July 1st, 2022. Mr. McEntee has been with the district for 19 years. Be further resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of Kathleen Kish, school nurse, effective July 1st, 2022. Ms. Kish has been with the district for 18 years. Be further resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the retirement of employee 030-822-R, effective July 1st, 2022. Be further resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts the remainder of the consent agenda as presented. All fair? We congratulate all those who are retiring and we thank them for their service to our district. Next on agenda is old business, which is none, and we will move to new business in 10.1, approve the minutes for regular board meetings. Any motion? Tom, Allison? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education accepts, approves, the February 7th, 2022, regular board meeting. All fair? 10.2, air tax surchargeary for DeGosian Cads Realty Group. Any motion? Ken? Good. Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes attorneys Shaw, Pearlson, May and Lambert, L L P, to execute a consent judgment in a tax surchargeary proceeding captured DeGosian Cads Realty Group, L L C versus Towne DeGosian and DeGosian Central School District. Be further resolved, the Board authorizes the refund of taxes as required by the terms of the consent judgment. Be further resolved that in order to fund said tax surchargeary judgment refund, budgetary appropriations for the 2021-22 school year shall be increased, code A 1964 dot 400, and that the tax surchargeary judgment refund amount be transferred to the general fund budget from the tax surchargeary reserve as the offsetting source of revenue. All fair? 10.3, government air tax surchargeary target. Any motion? Tom, Al?
Yeah, you got it, Mike. I got my, I got my pattern.
Be resolved that the Board of Education authorizes attorneys Shaw, Pearlson, May and Lambert, L L P, to execute a consent order and judgment in the tax surchargeary proceeding captured target number 1296 versus Towne Walco and DeGosian Central School District. Be further resolved, the Board authorizes the refund of taxes as required by the terms of the consent order and judgment. Be further resolved that in order to fund said tax surchargeary judgment refund, budgetary appropriations for the 2021-22 school year shall be increased, code A 1964 dot 400, and that the tax surchargeary judgment refund amount be transferred to general fund budget from the tax surchargeary reserve as the offsetting source of revenue. All fair? Close. Target, if you want history on that, it was seven years ago, Galleria took us for that, Target tried to join in, we fought Target off. One of the big surprises, when I got into more technical, the Galleria target was in our vision. And at the time, the Galleria was our largest factory. So that was a big issue we had seven years ago. I think we'll probably end up further as the malls continue to decline or repurpose to more entertainment, so. 10.4, motion to award a bid for dark knit fiber connection. Be resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education awards a bid and contract to Crown Castle, provide dark fiber between 41 Lincoln Avenue and DeGosian New York, 227 Main Street, DeGosian New York, for a period of 60 months at a rate of $950 a month, effective July 1st, 22 through June 30th, 2027. Be further resolved that the Board of Education rejects Crown Castle's bid for knit fiber as the district only hires dark fiber. All fair? 10.5, motion to award R F P for internal audit services to Cooper Aries, L L P. Tom, Allison? Be resolved that the DeGosian Central School District accepts and awards the proposal for internal audit services to Cooper Aries, L L P, for 21, 22, 22, 23 and 23, 24 school years, their rates are as follows. Risk assessment 21, 22, $5,000. Risk assessment assessment for 22, 23, $5,250. Risk assessment 23, 24, $5,500. Fee for monitoring and testing for 21, 22, 22, 23 and 23, 24 school years to be based on annual hourly rates as listed in the R F P. The internal order is appointed annually at the reorganization meeting. All fair? Close. Take the $5,000, if I'm correct, is the current rate that we have for the wall fire?
$4,500 per year.
10.6, nominations for the Orange Oster Board, I think these are all covens. Any motion? Should I go? Be resolved that the Board of Education nominates William M. Boss, Edwin A. Estrada and David E. for reelection to the Orange Oster Board of Cooperative Educational Services. All fair? Close. 10.7, accept annual fire inspection report and certificates. Tom, Allison? Be resolved upon a recommendation of the superintendent of schools, the Board of Education now has received the public school fire safety reports as presented on March 3rd, 2022. It is noted that any non-comportances that were indicated at the time of inspection were corrected and new certificates of occupancy have been issued. Additionally, it is noted that the legal notice will be published at least once in newspapers of record and that the fire departments with jurisdiction covering school facilities have also been notified and given access to inspection reports. All fair? 10.8, new tutor rates, setting new tutor rates for DeGosian Teachers Association, non-unit members, 21, 22 school year. Really? Ken? Be resolved that the Board of Education hereby establishes a tutor rate for DeGosian Teachers Association, non-unit members for the 21, 22 school year at $33.66 per hour. Close. I think I'm going. 10.9, declaration of negative impact under C C R. Proposed action. C C R? C C R? C C R? I need a motion. Tom, Allison? Whereas the Board of Education of the DeGosian Central School District, Board of Education is proposing a capital project consisting of heating, ventilation and air conditioning, HVAC improvements, associated renovations, roof restoration, roof replacement and roof repairs at Scottstown Avenue Elementary School and DeGosian Intermediate Schools, including incidental actions relating thereto, proposed action. Whereas the Board of Education proposes to proceed with the proposed action and wishes to take all actions necessary in connection therewith in order to comply with the State Environmental Quality Review Act, C C R. Whereas the Board of Education had reviewed the proposed action with respect to the type two criteria set forth in the C C R regulations at 6 N Y C R R, part 617 dot 5, and has determined that the proposed action is classified as a type two action pursuant to section 617.5 C one, maintenance or repair involving no substantial changes in structure or facility. 617.5 C two, replacement rehabilitation or reconstruction of a structure or facility in time on the same site and/or 617.5 C 10, routine activities of educational institutions of the C C R regulations. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Education determines that the proposed action is a type two action pursuant to 617.5 C 1 and/or 2 and/or 10 of the C C R regulations. Proposed action will not have any significant environmental impacts and no further action is necessary. All fair? 10.10, we're consolidating meetings in June. Any motion? Be resolved, the Board of Education hereby revises the June 22 Board of Education meeting as follows. June 6th, canceled. June 13th, newly scheduled meeting. June 21st, canceled. All fair? Close. If need be, why, June 27. President of the floor? Any motion for executive session? Allison, Billy? Be resolved, the Board of Education orders executive session with the intent to not reconvene the business portion of the meeting for discussions related to the employment history of a particular person or person. All fair? Thank you. Good night.
I saw she had it all set.